It's nine oh two AM and this work session is now in in called the order.
Great. Well, if I might, Commissioner, I will take the opportunity to introduce Anne McFarlane today. So as you have looked at the materials, Anne is the one of the pioneers in Jurassic Parliament. So but a bit of her background, she majored in Russian and ancient Greek at the University of California, Santa Cruz. She received a Marshall Scholarship awarded by the British government and earned a second degree at Cambridge University in England. She then joined the US Foreign Service, serving as a diplomat in Pakistan and on the Soviet desk of the US State Department. After marrying fellow Foreign Service Officer Lou McFarlane, Anne became a stay-at-home mom in the Congo, Tanzania, and Nepal. On returning to Seattle, Anne became a Russian translator and was elected President of the American Translators Association. Since developing Jurassic Parliament in 2000, she trains elected officials, staff, and nonprofit board members across the nation. Anne is a registered, a professional registered parliamentarian with Andrew East Step. She is the author of Mastering Council Meetings. And so without further ado, you can tell that Anne knows her stuff and and she also makes it incredibly accessible. So Anne, thank you so much. I know you have a very busy schedule and we've had to to reschedule you and things. So thank you for accommodating us in this continuing time of constant pivoting.
Absolutely. We've got to be flexible. So thank you so much. Thank you, Sam, for that nice introduction and thank you for having me, Commissioners. It's an honor, of course, to work with the Port of Olympia again. And it's also something that I enjoy more than almost anything else in life. So I'm really, really happy to be here. Let me show my screen so we can get started. So and you all should have, I hope, the the handout that was sent and the also the roles. I'm just gonna try to adjust this video a little bit here. Zoom is wonderful, but it won't let you. There we go. It won't let you set it ahead of time. Once you shared your screen, you have to redo it. So.
And Anne, if I might, just so you know, we have other staff members on online that are in the attendees list. So when we get to the role playing, we can bring additional people over.
That'll be great. It goes much better. We have more people. Thank you. Thank you. So maybe I'm not sharing the right thing. Hold on. Share screen. Here we go. Okay, so is that showing up as it should? Commission meetings? All right. So we are going to cover quite a lot today. Meeting discussion, point of order and appeal, how to do this, motions and amendments, the authority and role of the chair, the commissioners, the staff and the public and public comment and the right kind of control. So but I do feel free, if you have a question, to raise your hand and we'll take it as we go. Or sometimes with parliamentary procedure, because it's kind of an interlocking system, things that might not be clear at one point will become clear later in the session. So why are we here? What's the point? My goal today is to equip you to run great port commission meetings and serve your community. And after taking this training, you'll be able to describe the authority of the chair, the commissioners, the staff and the public. You'll be able to follow best practices for discussion. You'll be able to respond to disorder and difficult people. You'll be able to make motions and amendments and you'll be able to run effective public comment sessions. So I quickly want to say that I'm not an attorney. This presentation is strictly based on the principles of parliamentary procedure. If your attorney tells you something different, listen to your attorney. So the method is we're in the League of Northwest Dino Cities. It's not entirely realistic. It's a fantasy, but there's some overlap with real life. And you are going to be the members of the Dynopolis Port Commission. So here's a map of the League of Northwest Dino Cities. You can see Dynopolis down there towards the bottom, the capital. Yeah, I know it's teeny, but my late husband and I had a lot of fun creating this set of 70 cities, each of which has its own project that it wants to be following. So it's the Port of Dynopolis Regular Commission Meeting. And the motto of the port is, "We give equal treatment to all our clients, dinosaurs, whales, and people without fear or favor." So the first thing you do obviously is you call the meeting to order using a gavel if you have one. You sit in the chair reserved for the person running the meeting. Chair has two meanings. It's both the physical station in which you sit and you as the leader, the chair. You wrap the gavel lightly one time and announce this meeting of the Dynopolis Port Commission is called to order. You lead the pledge of allegiance. You ask the clerk to take the role and you announce that a quorum is present or not. That's the duty of the chair to announce the quorum, not the staff. Now, what is a quorum? The quorum is the minimum number of voting members who must be present for business to be done. And usually it's a majority, more than half of the members in office, the members who are actually serving on the commission. Quorum is different from votes cast. Quorum is a passive condition that allows you to take action, whereas the votes are the action that you take. And if you lose your quorum, you can't do business, which of course, for a public body includes listening and talking. Joe.
Well, thank you. A quick question. When you're talking about a quorum, you have a port commission meetings and work sessions. And then you have executive session. So is there a time, let's say, if you have an executive session and it's kind of urgent, that you would commence with the executive session with only two out of the three commissioners present?
Sure, because two is a quorum.
Okay.
A majority, in your case, a three-member body, two is a quorum and there's no problem with conducting business with a quorum. You may want to see, try to get that third commissioner for, you know, expediency and to make sure everyone's involved. But you're perfectly entitled to do that. Okay, so I want to mention that local government bodies must not create a walking quorum or a serial meeting. That's when members of the body talk or email with each other outside of planned meetings, such that a quorum is discussing the body's business. And when that happens, the Open Public Meetings Act has been violated. So what does that mean for you? I'm going to give some practical examples. Suppose that you meet your fellow commissioner in the QFC and you ask them, "Are you going to the Washington Public Ports Association Annual Conference?" Now, are you allowed to say that? Is that okay? Anybody want to make a guess?
Yes.
Yes, it's perfectly fine for you to ask, "Are you going to the Washington Public Ports Association Annual Conference?" Then you continue your discussion and you say, "Did you see that editorial attacking the port?" Is that okay?
No.
No, it's not okay. It's not allowed. Suppose you say in your conversation or in an email, "Those blankety-blanks in Olympia are out to get us." Is that allowed?
Go with no.
No, no, it's not allowed. And suppose you say, "I'm going to propose that we take action to ensure more transparency at our meetings." Is that allowed? Nope, nope, it's not allowed. I can't believe the motion that the city of Tacoma passed at yesterday's meeting. Is that allowed? No, no, none of this is allowed. Two out of three is a quorum. If you got one person, you're fine. As soon as you have two, you have created a meeting. It's the functional equivalent of having three and you can't do that unless the public is present. So two out of three is a quorum. You may not speak with another commissioner. You may not email fellow commissioners about anything to do with port business. Now, if you have an information item that you want them to see, send it to the staff and request that they distribute it. But don't do it yourself. To do otherwise violates your fiduciary duty and puts the port at legal risk. Now, this is a tough standard. It's not easy. But I urge you all to follow it because we have had wonderful examples in my home city of Shoreline, for instance. Some years ago, members of the council were sending each other emails. They ended up incurring personal fines, personal fines for violating the Public Meetings Act. So it's not just a matter of, you know, the honor of the port. It's a matter of you and your pocketbook and also your honor.
I have a question about that.
Sure, Amy.
There's one point of clarification. We just had the training at the WPPA. Can you or is it just a recommendation? Or can you not send one directional communications to the other port commissioners without them responding?
Why would you do that?
Well, that was something that came up in our training and it's, why would you do that? Because you want to make sure that the other commissioners are know know that you're bringing something up, I guess.
So why wouldn't you send it to the staff?
Um, I don't know. I or Joe's Joe's got a.
Uh huh, Joe.
Well, I'd like to weigh in on this. That I have a document from the Auditor's Office talking about email communications between commissioners. And if you say in the heading, "Information only, commissioners do not respond." So an email that's informational, not an opinion, you have to be careful. It's not your opinion about anything, but rather it's informational. Like, for example, in the last few weeks, if I request a an item to be put on the agenda from the chair, I'm comfortable in writing to the chair. And then I copy in the executive director and I say, "Mr. Chair, you know, I would like to add so-and-so item to the agenda for an upcoming meeting." And so that's really an informational item. Yes, it's a form of a request, number one. And number two, the reason why commissioners, I think, well, I can't speak for other commissioners. But, you know, sometimes you get frustrated that staff may and want to interpret your request or they may sit on it. And we don't have a standard for email communication even to this day. We don't have a 24-hour standard. We don't have a two-hour standard. We have no standard for how fast something gets forwarded on. So I, as one commissioner, you know, I get a little impatient with that. And I would like to be able to email informational items to my fellow commissioners with that caveat that's information only, do not respond. And I have a, I have a auditor, it's organization called MRSC. I don't know what that stands for, but it's a subcommittee of the Auditor's Office and it says that it's okay to do that.
Well, it's up to you. You all have to decide what your protocols are for communication. And perhaps this deserves a little bit of time and a decision as a port about what you're going to do. In my view, if you are dissatisfied with the speed of the staff response, you should speak to the staff. And I really personally believe that it is not acceptable to say, "I want this on the agenda." I really think that puts you at risk of violating. That's not information. That's port business that you are conducting. So again, it's up to you all. You're going to have to decide about this. But I I think that it, the the guidance that I'm giving here is the best practice. MRSC, which is a very good organization, it used to stand for Municipal Research and Services Center. And now they've just used the abbreviation. They're very good, but they have to give the broadest possible interpretation. And it's your task as commissioners to be sure that how you apply that is going to protect the port. So that's just my my view on it. Again, to you.
Okay, Commissioner, I'll, I wonder if this is something we can circle back in, whether it's when we're discussing rules or in a further meeting where we can all have a shared expectation as far as how our communication will be shared from the commissioner to the staff, to the other commissioners. And if if we have a shared expectation, like Joe's saying, that that will happen within 24 hours or in this way, that might help bridge the gap so that we're not exposing ourselves.
Yeah, I think, yeah, Joe kind of hit on it. We don't have that standard set up right now. I think creating that standard is probably in our best interest. I I know, you know, none of us want to put put the port at risk. So let's let's create that standard so we we can all follow it and be comfortable with it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
More work. That's what I think about having a training is that you end up with more work. So the agenda is prepared by the leadership, but it's within the control of the commission. And Robert's Rule says that if you follow the standard order of business, you don't need to vote to adopt an agenda. But many bodies do vote. It takes a majority vote to adopt and a two-thirds vote to change it later in the meeting. Now, just for your information, this is a simplified version of the standard order of business. Approval of minutes, officers' remarks and reports, committee reports, unfinished business. It's not called old business anymore. And then new business, if your body includes this. But many local governments don't have new business as a separate category. And here's an excerpt from the city of Sea-Tac, I think. "The City Council desires to provide adequate time for administration and staff analysis, fact finding and preparation. Except in extraordinary or unusual circumstances, all items that are not routine in nature shall, when presented, include a completed council agenda bill." So they do not want you bringing up a whole new topic under new business because of the need to prepare and also of, of course, of the need to inform the public. Now, I get asked sometimes, what's the difference between the regular agenda and the consent agenda? The regular agenda lays out the items to be taken up at a particular meeting. It follows your order of business. And the agenda may include, as a single item, adoption of the consent agenda. A consent agenda, or a consent calendar, as it's also called, lists items that are expected not to be controversial. And if any member requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda, it's done on a request. And the item is placed at its proper place in the regular agenda. Now, the key point here is this consent agenda cannot be discussed or debated. It's adopted with a single vote and the minutes must list all the items that were approved. Now suppose we're having approval of minutes. Yes, Joe.
Thank you, Anne. I'll try to talk fast and, you know, since I'm kind of loquacious today. If you have a consent agenda with two items and member of the body wants to discuss one of those items, then how do you, how do you remove that or what do you do when you have a consent agenda? And and a member says, "I'd like to take so-and-so item off of the consent agenda." Or, you know, what do you do to discuss a consent agenda item?
So the chair says, the the member says, "I'd like to remove item B from the consent agenda." The chair says, "Very well, item B is removed from the consent agenda and will be considered under unfinished business or whatever other point in the agenda is the correct time for it." And then you just go ahead and then you say, "Well, now now we'll take a vote on the consent agenda, which at this point contains only item A." And then you go ahead.
Thank you.
So we come to approval of minutes and somebody says, "Chair, these minutes have my remarks completely wrong. They say that I said that the staff had done a great job arranging community relations day. But what I actually said was that the staff had done a lousy job. I demand that this be corrected." So question for you, does this burnt-out member have the right to say that the minutes must be corrected? And must the body correct them? What do you think?
I think there's, you have the, have the right to point out what you believe is a mistake. Yeah.
Yes. But but the body itself must vote to change the minutes. The minutes belong to an individual. So you can say, you know, "I requested this be regular. I'm moved that this be corrected." But a single person doesn't have the right to say that because the minutes are the record of the entire body. However, there's another even more important point here. Why are these remarks in the minutes at all? Robert says that the purpose of minutes is to record the actions taken by the body. Minutes record what is done and not what is said. And I can't believe sometimes how difficult it is for public bodies and nonprofit boards to stick to this standard. You know, you see some of our wonderful cities on the east side where the minutes are 40 pages long because every remark is recorded. Well, that's a wonderful salve to your ego. But it is not the way to get your work done. And so I'm very happy to note that the port uses action minutes for your meetings. And we also recommend not including details of public comment in the minutes. And we'll discuss that later when we get to section six and public comment. So this is the process we recommend. The staff prepares and circulates the draft. If there's an error of fact or omission, the commissioner informs the staff, noting the video timestamp. The staff incorporates needed corrections and includes the updated version in the packet, pointing out that it's updated. And then the minutes are placed on the consent agenda for approval. You should not be spending hours at your meetings arguing about minutes. So I hope that's what you're doing. And if you're not, that's what we recommend. So any questions on this introductory portion before we turn to meeting discussion?
I I have a quick question. I I've been involved with boards that the articles in incorporation are, you know, their their bylaws require verbatim minutes. I I'm assuming the the port is different. It doesn't, doesn't require verbatim minutes. But if it is, then wouldn't the recordings be allowed as the as those minutes?
Well, I don't believe there's anything in your documents that requires verbatim minutes. Sam, you can correct me on that. If you did have such a requirement, if and it says verbatim minutes, that refers to a written record. In general, a recording is not minutes. It's important, but it's not the minutes per se.
Okay. But it's not a requirement of the board anyway, so.
Yeah, thank goodness. Thank goodness. Any other questions?
Just one question on consent agenda. So the only criteria of something that would not be appropriate for the consent agenda would be if it was controversial. But anything, any, any subject matter can go be utilized on the consent agenda.
Well, you know, Amy, it can be, but we, I I'm not in favor of taking big substantial decisions and putting them on the consent agenda. I don't know if you all saw that Mills College in California recently was dissolved as a college. And they were putting items on the consent agenda pertaining to the legal steps that had to be taken. And I I don't think that's a good idea, you know? I think the consent agenda should be things like minutes or proclamations or whatever, that that not, not substantial items.
Makes sense.
Yeah, anything else? Okay, so now we're moving on to meeting discussion, point of order and appeal. And we're going to do an exercise in order to demonstrate some of all this in practice. So we need, we need five participants. So I'd like, as we're reading this script, I'd like you to watch for rules for discussion, inappropriate remarks, point of order and appeal, and the chair being out of line, which I can assure you she's going to be. So in real life, members must be recognized by the chair before speaking. But in this script, the numbers take the place of recognition. We're just going to follow the numbers and read them out. That's just to speed things up a little bit. So the script is to raise the parking fees. I'll be the chair and we need five volunteers to read parts. And I will just mention that the elderly member and the environmentalist are both rather strong-willed, definite people. So you can tell me.
Um, Shayla, if you, why don't you bring Rudy over?
Okay, here he comes.
Now we'll get, that will give us five.
Okay, very good. So what roles would you like? Anybody? Commissioners have first pick. And you can all unmute yourselves, so.
I'll be the environmentalist.
Okay.
I'll be the elderly.
Very good.
I'll go with nurse.
No, there's no nurse.
There's nurse. Well, that's number three.
You're right. You're right. I apologize. Okay, you'll be the nurse.
I'll be, I'll be the banker.
Okay.
And Rudy, what does that leave you?
I don't know. Whatever's left, that'll be me.
You'll be the teacher. You'll be the teacher.
And and do we need a photographer as well?
No, actually, my slide you're giving the roles is a little bit wrong. We just need what's in that script. So so you all have that script and I'm also going to share it. So hold on.
Okay, I don't think we have an accountant.
No, that's what I'm saying that we have. Gosh, I'm really sorry. I I changed this for ports and then I messed up. So let's see, we have the, Joe, you're going to be the elderly member. And Amy is going to be the environmentalist. Rudy is going to be the nurse.
No, Commissioner I, Commissioner I L is the is the nurse.
Is the nurse. That's right. Okay. And so then what's left? The accountant.
Rudy can be the accountant.
Very good. Thank you. I'll have to clean that up.
And I'll be the teacher.
Okay, great. Thank you. So can it, now I'm going to share the screen. So is that visible? Can everybody see that script?
Yep.
All right, there is continuing pressure on our parking spaces in the port parking lots. The staff has reviewed the matter carefully. As you know, our current rate is $2 per hour. The staff recommends that the new fee be set at $20 per hour. Does anyone care to make that motion?
I move that the parking fee be set at $20 an hour.
Second.
Very well, it has been moved and seconded that the parking fee be set at $20 per hour. We will now have discussion on the motion. Environmentalist, as the maker of the motion, you have the right to speak first.
Well, I'm a believer in public transportation myself. I think that this increase will lessen congestion and also force more people to take buses or walk. It's a good idea for the environment and for our port.
Further discussion? The chair recognizes the elderly member.
I think this is a terrible idea. We've just learned that we have a $10 million surplus. Why would we increase parking fees and burden our residents in this way?
Do you know that the parking fees in most ports of the league are $15 per hour? We are so far below the market. It is ridiculous.
Well, that's not a reason to go crazy and lay this burden on our residents. Many elderly dinosaurs are really feeling the pinch. Our current tough economic times have hit them hard.
There's no point in being an old softie and begging for sympathy for the down and out. If they had an ounce of dumption, they saved up for their old age.
I can't believe this. What a hard-hearted comment. Someday you might be old and wrinkled and poor yourself. Have you no compassion?
All I have to say to you about that is nonsense, applesauce and balderdash.
Point of order.
State your point.
These members are monopolizing this discussion. Under Robert's rules, no one can speak a second time until everyone who wished to do so has spoken once.
The point is well taken. Members must speak in turn. Thank you, accountant. Further discussion?
This is likely to put a crimp on the vitality of our port. As long as, as longtime resident, I'm really concerned about this. I speak against the motion.
I see those arguments, but I think we have to be prudent. I guess on balance, I'm in favor of this proposal.
Honestly, I think you dinosaurs are just living in the past. We ought to be preparing to have driverless cars, not raising the rates on our parking lots. You're just a bunch of has-beens.
Point of order, Chair.
State your point.
That is an insulting remark. According to Robert's Rules of Order, all of us are obliged to speak with courtesy and respect, including the chair.
Uh, hmm, hmm, yes, the point is well taken. The the chair apologizes for her remarks. Is there further discussion?
Yes, in my opinion, this council is clueless. We have our heads stuck in the concrete. Given the way the stock market is trending, our surplus could just disappear. I hope everyone will agree to raise those rates.
You know, I've heard better discussions in my daughter's kindergarten class. It's clear that we don't have the sharpest knives in the kitchen drawer here.
Point of order.
State your point.
The members are insulting all of us by those remarks.
The chair will rule that the remarks are indeed insulting. Members will kindly refrain from such improper statements.
I have to say that I don't think all these rules are a good idea. They are keeping us from expressing our true opinion. You're an out-of-date dinosaur yourself, Chair.
The chair will rule that the words "out-of-date dinosaur" are insulting and may not be used.
Appeal.
Second.
Very well, the ruling of the chair has been appealed and seconded, so the members will decide. The chair has ruled that out-of-date dinosaur, oops, sorry. The chair has ruled that the words "out-of-date dinosaur" are insulting and may not be used. All those who believe that this ruling should be sustained, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who believe the ruling should not be sustained, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it, the motion passes, and the ruling of the chair is sustained. Members may not use this term. Further discussion?
We do. We do this, the residents will likely, are likely to come and throw eggs at our houses, or even worse, I'm dead against it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of raising the parking fees to $20 per hour, please say aye. All who oppose, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it, the motion passes, and we will raise the parking fees to $20 per hour. Great job. Great job. Thank you all. So. Now, I will want to say that a discussion like that should never happen in your port meetings, and I'm sure that it never ever does. But just in case, let's look at the principle of equality. This is a basic principle of Robert's rules. All members have equal rights, privileges, and obligations. All members have equal rights, privileges, and obligations. It's very easy to say, but it's not so easy to apply in practice because of our tendency to discuss things as if they were a conversation. So here's an important point. Discussion in commission meetings is not a conversation. It's debate and it has its own rules. And here's our first of our four fundamental guidelines. No one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. It's so important, I'm going to give it to you in red. No one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. This is transformative, but we don't follow it. Commissions tend to discuss their affairs in conversational mode. In conversations, dominant people tend to dominate. And agreeable people tend to let them. You must have a structure to make sure that everyone has an equal chance to speak. And this is both fair and efficient, and it's also the best way to ensure that each person has an equal voice. It's a paradox. The system is formal but inclusive. And it will make for robust discussion and advance your equity goals. Now, if the, if that happens and the chair doesn't put a stop to it, a member can make a point of order. Point of order is a motion that sounds esoteric and out of date and antiquated, but it's quite wonderful. And in our system, it's represented by a flying dinosaur. We're discussing a motion, the motion to raise the fees, the T-Rex stands for them, that motion. And somebody makes a point of order, it flies over the head of the motion and the chair just bats it out of the sky. And we'll, of course, do more about dinosaurs later. So when another member breaks one of the rules, a member may make a point of order and the chair rules on the point. Joe.
Well, I'd like to go back to the everybody gets to speak a maxim that you stated, and you know, I think that's great. I have no issue with it. I just want to say for the benefit of Chairman I L, that in my tenure, the last two years, how we handled that at the port was that the executive director and I would kind of predict what were hot-button issues. And so we would be sure to set up a round robin where everybody gets to speak, and then we go around again and see if anybody has additional comments. And so but on the other hand, Chairman I L could be, you know, I mean, there's a lot to keep track of when you're chair of the meeting. But another approach would be to, for Chairman I L to be very strict about it with every item that comes before the port. You do this round robin thing and then people get seriously used to it. You know, it goes Commissioner Evans, then Commissioner Downing, then Commissioner I L, then Commissioner Evans and Commissioner Downing. You know, you just kind of go around the room on each issue, and then you don't have to predict what's going to be a hot-button issue where the commissioners are going to talk a lot.
Yeah, I think with just three of us, it's probably I, I don't know. Unless it gets out of hand, somebody has a real, real issue and really wants to jump in there with a comment, I, you know, I, I, I think we can keep it pretty pretty amenable between the three of us.
Great, great. And we will talk a little bit more about how in, in the next section, so.
And is a member defined as one of the commissioners? It came up from the, a public member that the executive director was not able to raise a point of order. Could you clarify that, please?
Yes, exactly. In fact, we're going to come there in just a minute.
Okay, sorry.
So, point of order is a motion claiming that a procedural mistake has been made. According to Robert's rules, it can only be made by a member of the body, which is you three, you commissioners. But we recommend that key staff be authorized also. And I know of at least three different cities in the state of Washington where it's in their rules of procedure that the city manager and the clerk may make a point of order. The public may not raise a point of order. You know, if we're back and you have somebody jumping up in their chair and saying point of order, they are out of order. Now, there are two really important things to remember about a point of order. You may interrupt a speaker if necessary. Now, that's pretty drastic and that throws everybody off balance emotionally. But if somebody were, if a commissioner were making a terrible speech full of hate speech, you can stop them. You can say point of order, that's not allowed. And the other thing is, it must be timely. You have to make the point of order at the time of the offense. You can't, you can't do it later. It just has to be done at the time. And one more thing I, I thought about, about authorizing the staff, you can do that either formally or informally. I mean, you can have it in your rules or you can just say, Sam.
Sorry, I should have been quicker on my unmute. And, and for the commission's benefit, we did, you did consider this in one of your last rules update and did authorize the, the executive director to a call for a, a point of order. And so, so that, that's in there. I absolutely defer to the, the commission. It is your choice whether or not you wish that authorization to continue.
Great, Sam. Good to know that. Joe?
Well, so, so that's in writing somewhere, Sam? Is that in writing or?
Yes, I, yes, I believe it is in the, in the rules resolution already.
Okay, well, anyway, if you could point that out to the commissioners, that's great. You know, I don't want to you know, step on anybody's toes, but as I've said to my fellow commissioners and to you know, Sam, I try to listen to the public, you know, where I can, where it's not a matter of great urgency or a matter of great commitment on my part, where I've already taken a position. So, you know, I think some members of the public think that, you know, only the, the members of the commission should raise points of order, but I have to say that you know, a past commissioner, for example, had the habit of paraphrasing. So a commissioner would say something, and then this other commissioner would paraphrase inaccurately what they just said. And, and so that created a lot of points of order, and I don't anticipate the executive director, and the executive director was sometimes in a situation where her, her work or her character was being impugned and that necessitated a point of order, but I seriously don't see a a point of order for anything other than a procedural mistake, like we forgot to take a vote on something. So I don't really see it as an issue going forward.
Thank you. Any other comments on that from the commissioners?
Chairman I L, I would just hope we could tidy that up when we're tidying rules up, just so that we can refer the public back to that.
Yeah, it sounds like Sam will look that, that directive up and, or that rules change and we can, we can utilize it.
Well, we recommend it. Jurassic Department recommends it. Okay, so let's have a
Always have Ann to blame.
It's all the fault of Jurassic Department. So we're going to have a sample point of order here. I'm going to play it twice.
Point of order.
State your point.
That comment breaks our rules of decorum.
The point is well taken. Members may not use this term.
Point of order.
State your point.
That comment breaks our rules of decorum.
The point is well taken. Members may not use this term. So you see, it's very straightforward. The member says point of order. The chair replies, state your point. The member explains, and then the chair issues a ruling. The point is well taken, or the point is not well taken. Now, the chair does have to actually issue a ruling. I heard of a case recently where a council member said point of order and explained, and the chair replied, I agree. That's not a ruling. That's not a ruling. Now, you notice that the chair in these examples is using the third person to keep things neutral and lessen conflict. Stating the general rule, it's as if the chair is speaking on behalf of the rules of procedure. Your voice of Robert, don't say you're out of order. Don't say you made a mistake. I was at a council meeting once where the mayor said, John, I think you're off topic. That just is a big mistake because it personalizes everything and complicates the issue. And if in doubt, ask the group. The chair can always ask the group to decide if a point of order is correct. The jargon is well taken or not. So member A says that statement is just a bunch of baloney. And member B says point of order, state your point. The word baloney is insulting. The chair is in doubt and will ask the group to decide. All those who believe that the word baloney is insulting, please say aye. Members in favor, aye. All those who believe it is not insulting, please say no. Members opposed, no. The ayes have it, the word baloney is insulting and may not be used, or the noes have it, the word baloney is not insulting and may be used. And by the way, the outcomes of point and order and appeals are noted in the minutes because it's precedent for the future then. That stands unless and until the commission changes it later. So the Robert says, it is the duty of the presiding officer to enforce the rules relating to debate and those relating to order and decorum within the assembly. So the chair has that duty. And so the chair doesn't have to say point of order. The chair already has the duty of maintaining order and decorum, so the chair just needs to take appropriate action. And as we saw in the little skit, the chair is subject to the same rules. If the chair breaks one of the rules, a member may raise a point of order and the chair rules on their own behavior, which seems odd, but that's the way the system works. And again, I demonstrated that during the skit. Now, why do you make a point of order? You make a point of order if a rule has been broken. Do not make a point of order because you think someone has made a factual mistake or because you disagree with what they said. You want to speak about that during your turn to discuss. Now, once the chair has ruled on a point of order, the only allowable form of discussion is to appeal the ruling. And in our view, appeal is the most important motion in all of Robert's rules and the least known. So the chair enforces order and decorum, but the group is the final authority. And any two members can appeal a ruling of the chair. One member appeals and one seconds. Now, there is an exception. If the ruling is a matter on which there cannot be two reasonable interpretations, the ruling cannot be appealed. If your bylaws say that a person can only serve one year as chair and somebody wants to serve a second year and the chair says, no, it's not, you can't, it's in our bylaws, you can't appeal that because anybody can read it there. Now, what you saw in the skit was the complicated Robert way of handling appeal, but I just, again, found this very simple way. This is in the City of Sea-Tac Administrative Procedures. Any member shall have the right to challenge any action or ruling of the mayor or council member, as the case may be, in which case the decision of the majority shall govern. So I think this is really a very nice, elegant way to do it, and it's very simple because, as I say, the Robert's way is a little bit complicated. Now, if point of order is made by one member, but an appeal needs a second. And point of order and appeal are processed immediately. No other business can take place until they are dealt with. And points of order and appeals do not count against a member's turn to speak in debate. So we believe that point of order and appeal are the heart of democracy. And I will send you a packet of, of reference materials after our session that will include this article, point of order and appeal. Okay, so any questions, any further comments on that before we move on to how to do all this? Okay, so let's look at how to achieve the goals that we want. We have six recommendations for you. Seek recognition before speaking. No one may speak a second time till everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. No interrupting, no sidebar conversations, and courtesy and respect are required. So I thought that I put in here, hold on. So another, another idea, which I didn't list here, but is to have time limits. Now, you know, maybe you don't need them, but time limits can be helpful. So seeking recognition, members must seek recognition from the presider before speaking. This is just critical. You cannot let people just blurt stuff out. So you raise your hand and you wait to speak until the presider, the chair calls your name, nods at you, or gives some other sign that you have permission to speak. And the jargon is that you have the floor. And online, you can use the raise hand function or raise your physical hand. For Zoom on the telephone, you can press star nine. When you have not been recognized, you have a duty to remain silent. The exception is a point of order when it's essential. So here's another paper, Rights and Responsibilities of the Member. And I really like this paper and it is written by a colleague of mine. I'll be sending it to you. Then we had our guideline, no one may speak a second time till everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. And that means no crosstalk. No crosstalk. You can't have commissioners talking to each other directly and arguing. So how are you going to do it? Well, the chair can keep track of who has spoken and who wishes to speak using a chart. Or the chair can empower the vice chair to do this. It's good training for them. And here's an example of a speaking chart. And we give you all full permission to adapt this if you like. When I run our Corral Board Meetings, I have it on a little clipboard. And I just check off each person as they've spoken, and then I know whose turn it is. And as Commissioner Downing mentioned, another great method is the round robin. The chair goes around the table, asking each person in turn for their opinion. People may pass and speak at the end. It's important to jot down points or questions for when your turn arrives. And the chair has to wait their turn also. Sometimes chairs kind of answer each person back, which is not allowed. So this rule also applies to questions and answers and discussions with staff. We sometimes see situations where one person and a staff member get into a 15-minute donnybrook back and forth, and that shouldn't be happening. Don't let any two people hijack the meeting. When a member has the floor, they have the right to speak until they've completed their comments. Members may not interrupt each other. You know, in real life, we interrupt all the time, but you can't do that during a meeting. The chair may interrupt members when it's necessary to bring them to order. And members may interrupt to make a point of order when it's essential. No sidebars or texting, no sidebar conversations, no whispering, no texting to each other or people outside during meetings. I'm sure you're aware of the laws about that. And no posting on social media during meetings. There was a, in the city of Burian, they had a council member a few years ago who all through the meeting on her social media accounts was misrepresenting what people were saying and criticizing her fellow council members. So they had to pass a rule against that. That's very corrosive. Now, you want to keep your camera on. Unless technical considerations prevent it, all commissioners should keep their camera on while participating online. Otherwise, you're lurking. You're observing your colleagues without yourself being observed. And this is disturbing and creates an unpleasant emotional imbalance. Now, obviously, if you have technical issues, you can try to resolve them. I know that structuring discussion in these ways can be frustrating. And commissioners sometimes say, oh, I wish we could just hash it out and have a free-form discussion. Will the Open Meetings Act and the Press of Time mean that usually this won't serve your commission well? But there is an occasional exception. Sometimes there's benefit in the conversational style or informal discussion. It can be useful at study sessions or in committee meetings. The chair has to be sure that no one dominates still. And I beg of you, please, don't make the conversational style your ordinary or your default style of discussion. Then we have our fundamental guideline, courtesy and respect towards everyone are required. It's a basic principle of parliamentary procedure that debate must meet germane, meaning relevant to the topic at hand. Certain kinds of remarks are inappropriate because they're not relevant to the discussion. So courtesy and respect are required at all times. And there are five kinds of remarks that you may not make during commission meetings. Now, I'm just talking about the meeting here. You may not make personal remarks about other members, except for conflict of interest, and I'm sure you have a policy about that. You may not make discourteous remarks, insulting language or attacks. You may not use inflammatory language, language that gets people's blood pressure up. Oftentimes, people don't know that you may not criticize past actions of the group. You may not criticize past actions of the group. Now, there are two exceptions. If the whole commission is discussing the subject, you may criticize it. Or if the member is about to propose to amend or rescind the action at the end of their speech. You can't say, uh, building that skateboard park was the worst thing our commission ever did. But you may say, building that skateboard park was the worst thing our commission ever did, and I move that we tear it down. And then the last one is remarks that are not germane, that are not relevant to the discussion. So again, a paper for you, inappropriate remarks on local government councils. So let's have an example.
That's a flat outright lie.
Well, that is simply not allowed. And as one of my cities says, criticize ideas and not people. Criticize ideas and not people. And Roberts says even more intensely. The measure, not the member, is the subject of debate. The moment the here chair hears such words as fraud, liar, or lie. He must act immediately and decisively to correct the matter and prevent its repetition. Now, what about the deer in the headlights problem? You hear something and you know it's off, but how do you recognize it and what are you gonna say? Well, we have a tool, which is our cheat sheet, our wait, wait, what should I say cheat sheet, which is available for purchase from our website. It's laminated, a friend of mine calls it my placemat, he says, Anne, I love your placemat. And it's got circumstances on the left and remarks on the right. So it shows you what you can say if you're the chair. If you're a member speaking about another member, and if you're a member speaking about the chair. Which, uh, you know, I don't know of any other source for that kind of language. So it's really helpful to remember that the focus of our meeting is words on paper. Focus on the motions and not on the people who make the motions. And we recommend that commissioners take this approach outside the meeting also. Focus on actions taken and do not criticize colleagues outside the meeting. Now again, if any question arises as to whether a remark is appropriate or not, or a comment is germane. The chair rules, subject to appeal, and the chair may also turn immediately to the group. Ultimately, it's the group's call. So we'll send you our sample discussion guidelines for local governments. So I, are there any questions on those points? Any comments? All, all good? Everybody good? Okay, well, I think it's time for us to take a little break. I know that some of you have been in meetings for quite a while. So I have nine fifty-five and I will see you all back at ten oh five. So we have a ten minute break, you can refresh your coffee or whatever. Amy, how are we doing so far?
Good, I love learning about your background, so interesting.
Oh, thank you.
Where were some of your favorite places to be to hang out?
Well, I loved my assignment in Pakistan, that was my very first, of course. And then when we were in Nepal, we had our family with us and Nepal is a wonderful place, so. Yeah, it was great.
I met a gentleman on a plane very randomly and we've remained friends and he is from Lahore, so. Yeah, very interesting perspective, so much different than, you know, what you think before you meet people and.
It's true.
Wonderful man.
Great.
Anne, were you in Kathmandu?
I took Russian in college as well, Anne. I certainly didn't major in it though, but I've got like. My dad worked in the Far East in Russia, so. It's an interesting, uh, history. I was talking with the Chinese client about that, just the the pre-soviet history and the the pre-communist history and. Um, what's been preserved and what hasn't and.
Yeah, it's a very interesting question. Okay, so, uh, let's, let's resume then, and the next portion, the next section is going to be on, uh, motions and amendments. Now, let's start with a hypothetical situation. Suppose that you on the commission are at a meeting. And somebody says, I think that the public would have more respect for us if we created commissioner uniforms. And Commissioner B says, yes, that's a great idea. When I was visiting Italy last year, I really liked this uniform. And then Commissioner C says, uh. Oops, sorry, Commissioner C says, everyone looked great in that uniform. I agree, let's do it. So my question to you is, has the commission decided to create commissioner uniforms? No, no, it is not, because discussion is not deciding. You must have a motion to take action. And this has been an issue in the past with this commission. Uh, in particular, uh, about a year and a half ago, we spent hours and hours of time. About whether a discussion like that had amounted to a decision, which it did not. So you want to avoid this in the future. And you want to know when you can make a new motion. If the agenda contains a draft motion in an agenda bill, then you move it at the proper time. You can make a motion spontaneously when a subject is being discussed, if it is germane. But you can't make a motion during commissioner comment. So Commissioner C could have said, I move that we request the staff. To research the history of commissioner uniforms in Lily and report back next month. And then maybe you all would get that. Italian garment with braid and bunting and everything else that a person needs, so. It's really, as I say, this is really an important point. So in our system, our Jurassic Parliament system, we represent a main motion by a tyrannosaurus rex. So a main motion is a proposal to. It starts the action. It should be in writing, if at all possible, and you can only have one main motion at a time. So if we're discussing whether to raise the parking fee. And somebody says, I move that we conduct a survey of all the other ports in the league, that's out of order. And it has to wait until we've dealt with the one that we've got. So this is another of our fundamental guidelines, one thing at a time. So we recommend this sequence, the staff presents a proposal in writing and answers any questions. Each commissioner may ask one or two questions, then the next member has a turn. The motion is moved and seconded. The members discuss the motion and may amend it, and then the members vote on the motion. Now, it's very important that on this first item, when the staff is presenting the proposal. That questions should be focused strictly on information. I've seen in some cities that people will tend to say, oh, well, wouldn't it be better if we did such and so? In other words, the informational period kind of morphs into a discussion. You don't want to let that happen, you want to keep it strictly focused on information. Now, Roberts rules allows small boards, up to about twelve people, to hold discussion before moving the motion. And we recommend against this, we strongly recommend against this. We have found that it is much more efficient to move the motion and then hold the discussion. So here we are at our Dynopola support meeting and the executive director gives the report. As you know, stress and anxiety seem to be widespread among our employees. They're all worried about the possibility of an asteroid hitting the earth and wiping us dinosaurs out. Tough economic times also make it a challenge for them to keep their act together. Strong measures to improve their health are necessary. We propose that the commission will serve only organic vegetarian meals in the employee cafeteria. As given in Agenda Bill four, five, six. So then somebody moves the motion, I move that the employee cafeteria will serve only organic vegetarian meals. So then we have our main motion, our T-Rex. And then, so notice that a a main motion must be clear and unambiguous. Don't say, I move what he just said, or so moved. It should be phrased in the grammatical positive. I heard of a city recently that moved not to adopt an ordinance. Don't do that. Move to adopt the ordinance, then if you don't like it, vote it down. The main motion must comply with the bylaws and the procedural law of the land. And you can only have one main motion at a time, as we've been discussing. That's our fundamental guideline. So how do you introduce a main motion? I move that. That's all you have to say, I move that. And the member has the responsibility of formulating the motion. Don't mix up your ideas about the subject with the motion itself, you save those for debate. So the Ginkgo farmer says, the employee cafeteria will serve only organic vegetarian meals. Commissioner Johnson seconds the motion. Now you second a motion to show that you would like to talk about it. There's no need to be recognized, just give your name and call out second. And we recommend giving your name online so that it's very clear who seconded it. And it's okay to second a motion you disagree with if you want to explain why it's a bad idea. So don't say, I second this motion for the purpose of discussion, that's redundant. The whole reason you second is to open it up, so just say second. If there's no second, the chair says, there being no second, the motion will not be considered. And then moves immediately to the next item of business. Now, if the clerk did not hear, yes, Joe. Now, if the clerk did not hear, yes, Joe. You're muted. You have to unmute.
It's an interesting thing psychologically that to second emotion. Makes you almost supporting it in some fashion. So unfortunately. I can't speak for other people, but that kind of goes through your head that to second emotion. Means that you somehow get behind it. So is there anything you can say to help us? Divorce ourselves from the idea of supporting a notion, a notion, motion when we second it.
Well, all I can do is appeal to Robert, Robert and Henry Martin Robert and his authority, which says that all it is, is for you to see. That say that you'd like to talk about it. You can second it if you think it's a terrible idea and you want to explain why it's a bad idea. So it's, it's, I understand that, Joe. And in fact, I know of some cities where they don't even want to move it at all. Because they're, until they're ready to vote in favor. And that's just a misunderstanding. That's not how it works. So I understand the psychological pull. And I encourage you all to just ignore that and say second. And then when you get into the discussion, you know, let her rip. Explain why it's not good. So if the clerk didn't hear who seconded the motion, they should speak up. The clerk inquires who seconded this motion. And in general. The clerk must do this, must speak up when lack of clarity prevents her from doing her job. And the commission must be patient about that. Now, if you're out driving and you come up to this intersection. You don't have to think, should I step on the gas or step on the brakes? You know perfectly clearly what to do because you've internalized the system of traffic control. So I want you all to internalize the system of processing a motion. And I suggest that you take a pencil. And a piece of paper and write down the eight steps to process a motion because. Research has shown that writing something down, so it goes from your hand up through your arm into your brain. Makes it stay with you better than if you just hear it passively. So there are eight steps to process a motion. The member makes the motion. Another member seconds it. The presider states the motion. The members debate and/or amend the motion. That's when amendments come in. The members vote on the motion. The presider states the results of the vote, whether the motion passes or fails, and what happens next. And the presider states the next item of business. So these are the eight steps and I'm going to ask you, how many times do the members hear the motion? Yes, three times. They hear it three times. When the member makes it initially, when the presider states it, and then when the presider restates it. Now we are going to be processing motions a little bit later in our practice, so it'll be good for you to have this down. Notice that step three is very important. The presider must repeat the motion or have the clerk repeat it. Now, obviously, if it's a huge, long agenda bill, you're just going to read the title. But the reason is that after step three, the motion belongs to the group as a whole, not to the person who made it. And if you do this, then everyone will know what we're actually discussing. Also, the way the presider states the motion is the official text of the motion. So the chair must be precise. The chair has the duty of repeating the exact words of the motion made by the commissioner. And if some change is made, if the chair has put a little body English on it. The commissioner should speak up and repeat the exact words. Now, you don't want other commissioners at this time. We don't want a group rope. But you do have the right to say, just a moment, you know, that's not what I said. Step five is also very important. The chair must repeat the motion before the vote is taken. I was once at a meeting where somebody said, what did we just approve? And nobody knows exactly what it was. So. You know, you've got to be sure that everyone knows what we're actually voting on. This seems superfluous, but it's not. You as chair are like a football announcer. Sam.
Yes, if I can, if I can just add, and really for the benefit of. The commission coordinator who's, you know, and supporting you in that, the clerk needs to be able to do her, her job. And I know it can feel like there's a rush to like keep things moving. But everybody is perfectly okay for you to take a few minutes. Write, write, you know, write things down and read it back. And that really, really helps staff in. Being able to capture that in the, in the moment and then be able to expeditiously get our minutes out.
Great. Thank you, Sam. I second the motion. So the chair says, it has been moved and seconded that the employee cafeteria will serve only organic vegetarian meals. The person who makes the motion has the right to speak first. Do you care to speak to your motion? So the Ginkgo farmer says, well, the advantages of a plant-based diet have been established for a long time. I believe that this change will result in substantial improvements in employee health. In the long run, our employees will thank us for it. And then the social worker says, I think this is a terrible idea. If we do this, it's likely that some of our employees who are carnivores will start eating the other employees. So we have discussion on the motion and in the middle of it, a banker asks a point of information. Point of information, Chair. To which the chair replies, state your question. And the banker says, just how many of our employees take their meals in the employee cafeteria? So I just want to point out here that a point of information is a question. It's also called request for information. It can't be used to give information. Sometimes people say this. Point of information, people ought to know that when the port of Seattle tried that in their employee cafeteria, it was a horrible mistake. That's not the use of point of information. That's debate. And you have to give that information during debate. So when it seems that discussion is finished, the chair asks, is there any further discussion or are you ready to vote? And then if no one speaks up, takes the vote. So those are kind of rhetorical questions to see if you're ready. The chair repeats the motion. The chair says, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say no. The chair announces the results of the vote, whether the motion passes or fails and what will happen next. And the chair announces the next item of business. So the eyes have it, the motion passes, and we will direct the cafeteria supervisor to create an organic vegetarian menu or. The nose have it, the motion fails, and no change will be made to the cafeteria menu. Now here again, oftentimes chairs neglect these three parts of it. Whether the eyes or nose have it, whether it passes and what will be done as a result. You're not restating the whole thing. But you need to make these three points part of your announcement. Now on a voice vote, the chair must call for the negative vote. Even if it seems perfectly obvious that the motion is unanimous. This goes back to 1604 when Parliament was quarreling with King James of the King James Bible. So even if you hear everybody, you still have to say, is anyone opposed? Robert's rule says that to abstain is to do nothing and that the chair should not call for abstentions, but local government bodies generally will call for abstentions. And that is fine. If you abstain, it means that you aren't taking any position on the matter. To abstain is not to vote. Of course, you must abstain if you have a conflict of interest. Yes, Joe.
Well. That's what I was just going to ask is. When you are allowed to abstain. So on a three-person commission, every vote is so important. Can you abstain at will? Or do you have to have a, you know, state your reason for abstaining?
That's a great question, Joe. And that entirely depends on your rules. Under Robert, you can abstain at will and you don't have to give any reason. Nobody, anybody can abstain at any time. Now, of course, if you abstain, it might have an effect on the outcome. But you have that right. But I know many bodies in Washington State say. The commissioners must vote unless they have a conflict of interest. They put that in. Now also, somebody says that an abstention is counted as a yes vote or an abstention is counted as a no vote. And we recommend, strongly recommend against that. You know, either give people the right to abstain, but don't start saying what an abstention means. We think that's a mistake. Now determining whether, yes, Sam.
I have a question. It's related to Zoom protocol of. I, I, I believe that you require a voice vote and that a thumbs up or other indication. Is, it is not the best way to indicate your vote.
Well, you're so small, I would just do a roll call.
Okay.
I mean, we're going to use voice in our, in our exercise for the purpose of demonstration and the fun of it. But I, I think in your case, but, but you can, you can also, you can take a voice vote. It's okay. M R S C recommends that you treat every. Vote as if, as if you were just telephone, which would be roll, roll call, you know. So to, yes, Joe.
Well, yeah, to build on what Sam just asked. We did have a situation in the last year or two where a commissioner. More or less refused to give a verbal vote. Instead did this thumbs up thing. And, and they called, they got called on it and they still refused to give a verbal vote. I can't remember what the issue was, but. It was kind of bizarre behavior. So. I don't see that happening in the next four years. But if it does happen, so. When, when the protocol is to have a verbal vote and a person refuses to give a verbal vote, how do you count that vote?
Well, the chair can determine that it's, it's an abstention. It's not a vote at all. The chair can decide that it's, it's better not to have a fight and take it again by a show of hands. So everybody is showing it the same way. I mean, you don't want to have some people voting by voice and some people voting by a thumbs up. That's not any good. It should be consistent.
Okay.
And of course, the question is, if, if you say it has to be a verbal vote, how do you enforce it? I mean, you can't go into people's homes and make them raise their hands. So. You have to pick what will be practical, but ultimately, it certainly is the commission's privilege to determine how votes should be taken. And so if that's an issue, you can set up a rule.
Okay.
Now determining whether you have a conflict of interest is sometimes complicated. For example, under Robert's rules, a person may vote on something. That affects a class of persons of which they are a member. But your rules might be different. So you want to consult your attorney before the meeting so they can determine the correct situation. If you have a conflict of interests, you would say, I recuse myself from this decision because of my conflict of interest. Recusal is a special form of abstaining. And then you then leave the room and do not take part in the discussion or vote. And M R S C, of course, has lots more information about this. There's no debate during voting. Nothing can interrupt the voting process. And members are not allowed to explain their vote during the vote or afterwards. Now your rules allow a statement after the vote is taken, and I would recommend striking that. I would encourage people. To make their statement about why they're voting the way they are during the debate. And not to have this post hoc proposal, but that's up to you. And even a point of order must wait until the outcome of the vote is announced. A member may change their vote up until the time the chair announces the result. Immediately after that, they can change it with unanimous consent of the body. And under Robert's rules, once the chair has moved on to the next item of business, it's too late to change a vote. All right, Joe.
Well. It brings up an interesting point. So when you're having a discussion about a topic. And knowing that, once the vote's taken, you're done. The discussion is over. And, and I mean, I think that's a valid position, but. Sometimes. You know, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Sometimes you may want to. Line up with a certain person on the commission. So is it okay to? Say, you know, Commissioner I L, how are you feeling about this proposal? And so then, of course, Commissioner I L could say. I feel good about it, or I don't feel good about it. And that's almost like a precursor to how they're going to vote. I don't want to say I'm lining up with anybody, but I can envision a scenario where. Let's say you want a unanimous vote. And so. You're thinking about how you're going to vote, but you're not necessarily the last person to vote. But you want to kind of line up with how the other commissioners are feeling. You get what I'm saying there? And, you know, it's kind of a nuanced thing, but. You know, I just want to be able to take this opportunity to discuss these eventualities.
Sure. Well, this is perfect opportunity for that. Well, under Robert, as we've said, you're not going to have any crosstalk. So you can't ask the commissioner directly, but I think it'd be fine to say, I'd like to know. What my fellow commissioner's position is on this at this time. And then if the chair, the chair can ask each other commissioner to respond, it's perfectly fine to ask that.
Okay.
If they haven't already made it perfectly clear. Sure.
Okay. Good.
All right. So as I say, under Robert, once you've moved on to the next item of business, it's too late to change a vote. Somebody wrote me last week and said. I don't like the way I voted at the meeting the previous week. Can I change my vote? No, no, you absolutely can't. Now you can. Ask the group to change its decision using other motions that like reconsider that we're not going into in this training because of time constraints, but you don't get to change your vote. Now let's look at amendments. You amend a motion to improve it, unless you're the US Congress, but we're not going to go there. And the amendment applies to the main motion. The amendment must be germane, which means relevant. And anyone can move to amend, even the person who made the motion. You might look a little foolish if you. Make a motion and five minutes later, you're proposing to change it, but you have, there's no prohibition against it. So in our system, amendment is represented by dimetridone, dimetridone. So the amendment is processed using the same eight steps that we just saw for a main motion. You see how handy that is, that you've got those steps memorized. Now there are four different ways to amend. You can add, and we're going to go through examples of each of them. You can add or insert words. You can strike out words. You can strike out words and insert words in their place and you can substitute. So here's adding words. The employee cafeteria will serve only organic vegetarian meals, starting in January 2023. Here's inserting words. The employee cafeteria and all the snack bars will serve only organic vegetarian meals. Here is striking out words. The employee cafeteria will serve only vegetarian meals, striking out the word organic. Here's striking out and inserting. The employee cafeteria will serve only organic vegan meals. And here's substitution, which is a little complicated. We say, don't try this at home. I move that we amend the motion by substituting this paragraph. That we will consult with a qualified nutritionist in order to upgrade the menus offered in the employee cafeteria and improve employee health. So as I say, that's a little bit complicated. Now the challenge is we vote on amendments before we vote on the main motion. In order to make the main motion as good as possible, to perfect the motion. It sometimes seems kind of maddening to people. They say, look, we haven't even decided and we're already changing it. But that's how it works. So the dancer says, I move to amend the motion by adding the words to be provided exclusively from local vendors. So if it's adopted, it will read that the employee cafeteria will serve only organic vegetarian meals to be provided exclusively from local vendors. So people sometimes get confused and don't realize that after voting on the amendment, the process has continues. Once the fate of the amendment has been decided, debate continues on the main motion. So I'm going to stop the share for a moment so that I can demonstrate this properly with my dinosaurs. So here we are. We've got our main motion. The employee cafeteria will serve only organic vegetarian meals. Somebody proposes an amendment to be provided exclusively from local vendors. So we, we're not going to do anything with this guy. This amendment blocks the forward. Progress of the main motion. And in fact, that's how I got started with Jurassic Parliament. I was trying to think 20 years ago. How can I show our board that if you've made an amendment, you can't do anything with the main motion until you've resolved the amendment? Well, it was just when the movie Jurassic Park was so popular. And I was cleaning up my son Steve's bedroom, which of course he was supposed to be doing himself, but there I was. And my eye fell on these dinosaurs. And I thought, well, you know, this could be the main motion and this could be the amendment. And we can show people that you have to decide on the amendment. Now, if you approve it, if you adopt it. It becomes a part of the main motion. And then you have what's called an amended main motion. Which you can still discuss and consider, and you can have other amendments as well, which you could adopt, you know. But if you don't like it, if you vote it down, then you toss it away. And you go back to the main motion that you. and you go back to the main motion that you were considering. So that's how it all got started. I owe it all, owe it all to Steven Spielberg and my son Steve, whose dinosaurs I promptly stole. So, um, once the fate of the amendment has been decided, debate continues on the main motion. And more amendments are possible, provided they apply to a different aspect of the main motion. It takes special actions, reconsideration, to go back and change something we've already amended. And after all amendments have been processed, the body still must vote on the amended main motion. Now, I just want to mention about a friendly amendment. A friendly amendment is often misused. Just handle it the same as any other amendment. Ask, is there a second and so on? Because once the motion has been stated by the Chair, the maker and the seconder have the same rights as any other member. Don't turn to the maker and the seconder to ask if they accept the amendment. This gives them improper power. So then we're having discussion and somebody says, oh, honestly, this is taking too long. I call the question, that means we have to vote right now. Now, if somebody calls the question, do you have to vote immediately? Joe. You've got to unmute.
I think, uh, I think this has been somewhat misused in prior Port Commission meetings. In answer to your question, you have to call the question and then somebody has to second it. But honestly, in the past, you know, a Commissioner has called for the question and then we just go to the vote. So I think that's a little improper, am I right?
Absolutely right. Bravo. It's completely improper. It's completely improper. So call the question, we represent it by a triceratops. And it's a, it's a, it, it's not a mean nasty monster who shuts everybody up. It's a request by one person to stop debate and vote now. So it's not like the other motions that we saw. It's a vote on whether to vote. And it needs a second and it cannot be debated, you know? Thank goodness, we can't debate on whether to stop debate. And it takes a two thirds vote to pass. So if it passes, you stop talking and you vote immediately. A two thirds vote means at least two thirds of the votes cast, and it should be taken so that you can see the result, such as by a show of hands, don't take it by voice. And Roberts specifies a two thirds vote when members' rights are limited or extended. And of course, for you, this is not a big distinction, that a majority vote is more than half of votes cast, because in your case, a two thirds and a majority vote are the same. But you just need to know this for General Roberts rules. Phew, so any questions so far? All right, so now we're going to do motions practice. We're going to leave the port and go over to City Hall. And now you're going to be the members of the Dynopolis City Council. The city of Dynopolis has a ten million dollar surplus this year. So we're going to debate what to do with it. So I hope you all received the paper Jurassic Parliament roles. And I hope that you've picked out a couple of roles for yourself that you're willing to play. You certainly do not have to print them all out, but you just need a couple. And if you can just let me know who you're willing to play, that would be great.
I picked the harmonica manufacturer, the fashion designer and the ginkgo farmer.
Very good.
Anne, would you like a couple of members of staff as well?
Absolutely, no, we need them.
Shayla, why don't you move over Rudy and Lisa and, um, Valisha? Alrighty.
Bob, who would you like to be?
Yeah, I was gonna go a little bit out of my ordinary and maybe a little out of my comfort zone and go with fashion designer and opera fan.
Okay, well, fashion designer's been taken, so.
I think Bob should be the fashion designer.
I agree. I second that.
Okay, we'll, we'll keep you fashion designer. Joe, how about you?
Uh, may I be the, uh, about the movie fan, the botanist and the enemy of the mayor?
Okay, very good. Enemy of the mayor. Rudy, how about you?
I'll be whatever you need me to be, but I don't have any, uh, prepared materials in front of me. I would have to be reading off whatever's on the screen.
Okay, so, uh, we'll need to send Rudy that, that file that he can, he can pick.
Yeah, Shayla, can you send over the, um, uh, materials that, um, Anne sent out, your, or Lisa?
I'm happy to.
JP roles.
Yeah, the roles. All right, you got it.
Who else do we have? Sam, who are you going to be?
I'm going to be the ferryboat captain.
Uh huh.
The general contractor.
Yes.
And the astronomer.
Very good.
And we have Lisa, too.
And Lisa, who are you going to be?
Well, um, I am going to be the guitarist, uh, the spa manager and an opera fan.
I already have the opera fan taken.
Oh, um, I'll be the fisherman.
Very, no, I think, no, fishermen's, uh, very good, very good. Okay, so Rudy, you can just pick them when you're ready and just jump right in. So let me describe how we're going to do this. We, this motion has already been moved and seconded, that the city build a performing arts center at a cost not to exceed ten million dollars. And so you are members of the city council and also you have the roles that you have. So what, what we're going to do, if we're going to have discussion on this, I invite you all to just unmute yourselves, so it's easy to speak up. And so when you want to say something, raise your hand, but announce which role you're speaking as, because since you all have chosen several, we wouldn't know. And you have a remark on that piece of paper that you could make, but you can also say anything you like. And you can also behave badly. You can make mistakes, you can insult your colleagues, you can do whatever. It's totally free form. It's not like that script that we have, okay? So here I am, the mayor of the Chair of the Meeting. So it's been moved and seconded that the city build a performing arts center at a cost not to exceed ten million dollars. Does anyone care to speak to this motion? Just raise your hand on Zoom, you're in, in person. Okay, uh, harmonica manufacturer.
I'm actually the ginkgo farmer and what about small farmers? This money ought to go to the backbone of our economy, not be wasted on these frivolous entertainment wealthy people. I'm against it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Joe.
I'd like to make sure that the center, first of all, I'm in favor of, of building this performing arts center, um, but I want to make sure that it includes a widescreen suitable for showing IMAX movies.
So the Chair will point out that at this point, we're discussing the broad concept of building the center and details of that type will likely be considered during implementation, but I'm glad to know that you're in favor. Bob.
Uh, well, as a fashion designer, I believe that dinosaurs need the psychological lift that nice clothes give them. Uh, I think we should subsidize the clothing industry with this money instead.
So you're against the motion?
I am against the motion.
Thank you. Further discussion? Sam.
As a general contractor, I think it's despicable that the fashion designer would try to line his own pockets, uh, with, with this motion.
Just a moment, contractor. Members are reminded that personal comments of that type are entirely unacceptable. Kindly refine any remarks, uh, confine any remarks to the merits of the pending question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that the, um, that the city should be supporting general contractors, in particular my company. And so if you do choose to, to build this, I think I should be given the contract.
We'll point out that under our rules of ethical rules, that would be a decision to be made by the council without the participation of the general contractor. Lisa.
Well, I believe that the fishing industry needs much more relief than what we're, uh, than, than, uh, spending money on this grandiose project we're talking about.
So you speak against the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Further discussion? Are you ready to vote? Uh, Sam.
As an astronomer, I would like to point out that what we really need is an observatory. And I'm kind of with the, the other council members, like big screens, observatory, like I'm not ready to talk about.
Point of order, point of order.
State your point.
I don't like the way she's talking.
How many people would like to make such a point of order? Not well taken. Continue, Madam Astronomer.
I think that this is, uh, this concept is not, uh, yet well vetted and we need a lot more details before we can actually even consider it.
Thank you, Rudy.
Yes, as the attorney, I think it's critical that we ensure that the project is zoned appropriate and meets all the league and municipal requirements.
Thank you. The Chair will make a note of that. So let's pretend that we're finished with discussion just for the sake of demonstration. So everybody be sure you're unmuted. All right, so now, uh, we're going to take the vote on whether to build a performing arts center at a cost not to exceed ten million dollars. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it, the motion passes and we will build a performing arts center.
Due to the ayes really have it.
Point of order, point of order.
I'm glad you're alert. Sometimes people don't say anything. So there is a single thing that, uh, a member of a body can say if you doubt the result, which is division. Division, just shout out division. And then the Chair has to take the vote again by a different method. So does anybody want to call for a division?
Division.
Okay, a division has been called for, therefore we'll take it again. Now, notice that how you voted before doesn't count. So if someone has slipped you twenty dollars in the meantime, you can change your vote. Oh, I didn't say that. Sorry. For all those in favor of building a performing arts center, please raise your right hand and keep it up, so the Chair can see. Thank you. Hands down, all those opposed, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Hands down. So the noes have it and the motion fails and we will not build a performing arts center. And the Chair apologizes for her error. So now, we're going to make a new motion, which is, any, any one of you can make it from, and it's again, you have them on your chart, on your, on your sheet, you have motions you can make and you can also make other motions. Bob, and again, introduce yourselves.
Uh, yes, um, I'm Bob I L, an opera fan, and I would like to, uh, I would like to move that we allocate one million dollars to partner with the schools and bring students to the opera performances for free.
Is there a second?
Amendment. We'd like to amend the motion.
Not, not yet.
Okay.
Okay, so then it has been moved and seconded, that we use one million dollars of our funds to partner with the schools and bring students to the performances for free. Do you care to speak to your motion, Mr. Opera Fan?
Uh, this, uh, yeah, I think this will increase the happiness and the well-being of, of our students.
Thank you. Further discussion? Joe.
Uh, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to amend the motion, uh, in the following way. Um, I'd like to support, uh, opera for the students as Commissioner I L says, to the tune of, uh, one million dollars. I also like to, uh, allocate another one million dollars of our budget towards a, uh, building of an IMAX, uh, movie screen for, also for the students enjoyment.
So the Chair will rule that the proposed amendment is not germane, that it's not relevant to the motion. And so it cannot be considered. Let me go rescue my dinosaurs, hold on. Rudy.
Yes, I, I would like to move to amend the motion to require apprenticeship programs for electrical plumbing, uh, services, uh, associated with this project.
So again, the Chair will reluctantly rule that the proposed amendment is not germane and may not be taken up. Lisa.
Well, since guitar is the best possible instrument for design, dinosaurs to make beautiful music, I move that we request the superintendent of schools offer guitar lessons to all students in the high school.
So that motion will not be taken up. The Chair will kindly remind all members that amendments must be germane to the main motion. Now, just a side note here, uh, whether it's germane or not is a subjective decision that's made by the Chair. But of course, it can be appealed also. Bob, uh, uh, see if anyone else wishes to speak who hasn't yet spoken. Sam?
Yes, and, and I would like to, um, uh, remind the Chair before she rules on whether this is germane or not, or not, that if life is not present on the planet, then, then none of this matters. So I, I move to amend the motion by adding, and we provide, um, asteroid protection shields on all the buildings in the city, including this new one.
You know, you people have just had this training on Jurassic Parliament and you're not taking it to heart. Rambling, impossible amendments. Can you please get your act together?
Point of order.
State your point.
I find the Chair's, uh, language, uh, to be offensive.
Well, on reflection, the member is correct. The Chair apologizes for getting carried away.
Point of, point of information.
State your question.
Uh, I'm a little confused with, with, uh, the dialogue. Would the Chair be able to restate the motion that's under consideration?
That's a great question and that's an excellent way to do it, too. So the motion is that we use one million dollars of our funds to collaborate with the schools in order to provide a program to bring the schools to opera performances for free.
Point of order.
State your point.
I don't believe the Chair actually ruled on my previous suggested amendment.
Well, it's true, the Chair was just getting carried away by her passion at the horrible parliamentary proceed, uh, oh, sorry. Proposed amendment is not germane and will not be taken up. Amy?
I have a question, not in character, a question about the process. So what, what about when you're trying to package something like, okay, yes, we'll do the one million dollars for this and we'll do the one million dollars for this? And you're saying that they're not germane, how do you navigate that?
So it's a great question. Uh, you can have a motion, a main motion, that has several parts to it that are, that are related or even that are not related. But if they're not related and somebody wants to practice, take them separately, it has to be done. That's called dividing the question. But in this case, the, the, the question a person might ask is, is this a motion about opera? Or is this a motion about students? And the Chair has the discretion to decide. And in this case, she's deciding that it's about opera. And it's not about trying to benefit students, but another Chair might make a different judgment and say it's about benefiting students and so these different things are allowable. And again, any decision like that can be appealed. It's going to be the, the body's ruling as to what's germane or not.
And can you remind me, it's moved to appeal or what, what is the correct language?
It's just, I appeal.
I appeal, okay.
Yeah. So I think, Bob, you had your hand up.
Uh, yeah, I guess I did. Um, I, I, I think I would be, uh, willing to, as, as, as the, the, uh, maker of the main motion in um, consideration, I would, uh, I would be willing to amend the motion and say that I move that we amend the motion by adding the words and that we invite our high school choir to sing at the ceremony marking the opening of the project.
So is there a second to the motion? Hearing none? It's not going to be taken. Sorry, Joe.
Uh, so first, uh, out of character procedural question. Can a maker of a motion simply amend their own motion or should they withdraw their motion and restate it?
Well, it's, they can propose an amendment and it will be the body's decision whether to take it up or not.
Okay.
Well, in this case, we didn't get a second, so we're not going to take it up. If you, if you want to, if you don't like your motion or you've changed your mind, you can't speak against it under Roberts rules. You may not speak against your own motion, but you may ask permission to withdraw it. And that's usually given by unanimous consent. Usually the Chair says, is there any objection if the opera fan withdraws their motion? So that, that's the way that's handled. So further discussion on the motion to partner with the schools. Are you ready to vote? So all those in favor of allocating, allocating one million dollars of our funds to a program to partner with the schools and bring students to opera for free, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no.
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 So the Chair is in doubt, so the result of the vote, so we'll take it again. So all those in favor, please raise your hand, right hand, keep it up. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. There are four in favor and two against, so the motion passes. Thank you. There are four in favor and two against, so the motion passes and we will implement this program. Now, would any of you like to be the chair for processing another motion?
That, uh, did not see that coming.
Well, you don't have to.
You can do it, Bob. You can do it.
Yeah, alright.
Bob is our chair, Anne, so.
So, uh, so yeah, I guess, uh, I guess I'm.
Care to make a motion?
Yeah.
So you say that.
Oh, does anyone care to make a motion?
This is the, the astronomer and I, I move that we develop an asteroid resource, research program to fend off the nest, next expected asteroid, um, uh, fall that, which is due next year.
Um, so there is a motion to, and a second. Um, I, I, I would restate the motion, but I really didn't get all that.
I, I, I can repeat for the chair's convenience.
Sure, please.
That we develop an asteroid research program to fend off the next expected asteroid fall, fall due next year.
Ask a question about.
Well, there's been a motion and a second. Um, so, um, now we can go to discussion.
So I think the question was an informational question, yes?
Well, this is a procedural, not, not character. I'm not, I'm not in character. I think, I'm wondering, I think it would be so helpful. I know, uh, we're losing Sheila. Sad. Um, but, uh, if the commission coordinator could type up the motions, is that something, Anne, that you see for me, the visual and watching it be amended helps me a lot? Not, not in this meeting, but actually in our meetings. Is that something that's reasonable, Sam?
I think, I, I, I think so. And typically for a lot of our things, we have a sample motion that's up in the, in the PowerPoint. And, um, uh, I, I think that is, I think that we could have the commission coordinator then go ahead and, and just type in that PowerPoint slide. I, I, I do wanna just make sure that that's easy enough to do 'cause the Zoom interface, I, I think it will be, but I, I totally understand your request of, you know, rather than keeping track of all the amendments, uh, verbally to actually see the words up on the screen.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Can I offer, um, a little, uh, uh, comment on that, um, thinking about the commission coordinator's perspective? As demonstrated in our just, just past process, um, trying to keep up with all of the motions as they're made and all of the amendments as they're made and typing them into a document that's on the screen, um, could get, um, it, it could slow things down, which, which would be good, but it could be difficult for the commission coordinator to try and keep up with all of the, um, the motions that get made and the amendments that get proposed. And, and so I think if, if that's the path that we would like the commission coordinator to go, I think it would be important to ensure that we have, um, clarity around when she should do that. So, you know, I made a ridiculous, uh, um, proposed amendment and the chair said, no, that's not on point, then I wouldn't express, expect the commission coordinator to have to type that up. But I think it's going to be really important to, um, help that person understand uh, what actually should be typed on the screen if, if that's the path to take.
Very good. You can also just create a Word document, which is a little bit easier to work with than a PowerPoint, in my view. Pop the motions in there and then, you know, have that stop the sharing the PowerPoint and show that instead. Let's give it back to our chair.
Um, okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, is there any comments, debate on this motion? Uh, yes, Commissioner Downing?
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to amend the original motion to replace the words fend off an asteroid with the words search out and destroy any asteroid before it gets within fifty miles of the planet Earth.
Second.
There a second? Yes, okay. Um, so we have a motion. It's, we have a motion and a second. We have a an amendment to the motion and a second. Is there further debate on that?
You need to state the motion or you could just ask him to.
Commissioner Down?
I'd like to speak in favor of my, uh, amended motion by saying, uh, we should all go watch that movie. Don't look up because it talks about, you know, the different approaches you can take when the destruction of the earth is imminent and it's relevant to, you know, how we vote on this amendment.
Any other debate? Any other comment? Yes, Anne?
So I'm the, uh, the ho- housekeeper and I believe that you people are just do- doing pie in the sky. I think my fellow commissioners are showing a shocking lack of ability to understand the real issues facing working people and I condemn you all for your cali-
Pardon me, uh, pardon me. I'm, I'm going to, uh, interrupt you right there. Please refrain from, uh, using disparaging comments against the members of the commission.
Okay.
I, I, I'd like to speak to the, the amendment and, um, as the only astronomer in, in the room, I'd like to um, uh, point out that, um, if the asteroid is with, within fifty miles of the earth, we won't be around to vote or do anything else. So, um, you know, I, I, I think that is a ludicrous amendment.
Notice she said ludicrous amendment. That's perfectly funny.
So, question. Could you then amend the amendment to be three hundred miles? Or do you have to vote on the amendment?
No, you, you can amend the amendment and if there's time, we'll take it up at the end. How to do that?
Because right now, we're voting on the amendment.
Exactly.
Only. Right, right.
There's no other discussion? Um, then let's take a vote on the amendment to the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Which is, on the amendment? Ask Joe to state it again.
Yeah, uh, I'm restating that, that amendment because I didn't write it down. I'm gonna ask for a little help with that.
I'll be happy to restate the amendment, uh, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
And simply that I replace the original, uh, motion words, uh, fend off an asteroid with the words, uh, search out and destroy in, in the asteroid before it becomes fifty miles from the earth.
Alright. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. All opposed to the amendment, say no.
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 Um, that sounded like it was pretty even to me.
Division.
So let's, uh, uh, let's revote by a show of hands. If you're in favor of the amendment, please raise your right hand. Those opposed?
You can vote 'cause it's a small board.
Yeah, okay. Um, alright, well, I didn't see Rudy or Shayla, so that was, um, the, the noes have it. The, uh, the amendment fails.
Correct. Tie vote fails.
Oh.
So, left.
Back to the main amendment or main motion? Was there any further discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote on the main motion. All in favor of, uh,
The project.
The project. Thank you, yeah. All in favor of the project, uh, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes and we will, uh, commence with the project.
Good work. Great work, Bob. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes. So, of course, it's not as easy in real life. I mean, we're, at least we're giving ourselves the opportunity to practice here. So thank you. Thank you all so much. That was wonderful. So, and now we're gonna go on to the authority and role of the chair, commissioners, the staff and the public. So, I wanna mention that, uh, Robert has different rules for small boards. In a small board, the chair may make motions, discuss and vote. But we recommend that the chair exercise restraint by speaking and voting last and by refraining from making motions. But this is a Jurassic Parliament suggestion. This is not in Robert's rules. And in all of this, I'm referring to Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised, twelfth edition. It's abbreviated R O N R. Now, I wanna tell you something and please don't out me to my fellow parliamentarians, but I think this is a terrible book. I think this is a terrible book. Robert originally was a lieutenant colonel in the US Army Corps of Engineers. And one of his first assignments, in fact, was on San Juan Island. Yes, exactly. He was gonna protect us from the British. Fifty-nine. And when he published his first book in eighteen seventy-six, it was a pocket manual. It would literally fit in your coat pocket and it took off. All across the nation, people were thrilled to have a common understanding of how to work with each other in meetings. But I believe that his heirs and successors, who still own the franchise, did what is a very common human tendency, which is they improved it until they wrecked it. And when I first got involved, you know, I was just horrified at this book. But I eventually realized that it's like the Pareto Principle. It has a core of information that we really need. It has a core of ideas that are essential for good and fair meetings. So if you want, uh, your own Robert, we recommend getting the Spiral Bound, which is only available from the National Association of Parliamentarians. And there is another book, which is a good book, which is Robert's Rules in Brief. Now, you can read it in a weekend, although nobody wants to either, and it's also available in Spiral Bound. And it is the best short introduction that I know and it's quite inexpensive as well. So if you're gonna get into this, I encourage you to get a, uh, Spiral Bound. So I'd like to talk here about two different types of organizations. One is shaped like a triangle or a pyramid. And at the top, you've got the boss who's in charge. And the boss recruits people to do the work of the organization, tells them how to do it, and if they do it badly, fires them. And the, one of the features of such an organization is that it has status or rank. And people who are near the top are higher in status than people who are down below. Now, to me, that's not in and of itself a bad thing because we need the hierarchy in order to have the accountability. You hope that the people near the top listen to the people down below, which they have a tendency not to do. But in and of itself, this is necessary. If all of us on this call had the task of building in addition to the port headquarters and we all had the same status, we would never succeed. We would never do it. So this is very common. This kind of structure is very common. Every corporation has a CEO. Every, uh, hospital has a director, every school has a principal, every army has a general. It's so common that we tend to think of it as the ordinary or the default style of organization. But there's a whole other kind that's called a voluntary association. Then in a voluntary association, a group of people come together to achieve a common purpose. They set up some guidelines for themselves and they select a leader. But the leader is a peer. The leader is an equal who has the same standing as everybody else during the meeting with some special extra duties. So each member in a voluntary association, like your commission, has an equal right to speak and to try to persuade others to accept their view. During meetings, the chair controls the process, so the group can make the decisions. And during meetings, the chair is the servant of the group and the group is the final authority. Now, that's the most important thing I'm gonna say today. The chair is the servant of the group and the group is the final authority. This is absolutely critical. And it's a challenge for us because in our society, the image of the leader as the captain of industry, you know, charging ahead, lead, follower, get out of the way, is so strongly developed that once people get elected chair or mayor or president, they tend to act like the boss and other people start to treat them like the boss. So you have both types of structure. The port commission forms a voluntary association and the executive director and staff form an accountability hierarchy. Now, what is each individual's, each person's individual authority? Nothing. Zip. When you walk out on the street, you have no authority. And I really like this phrase from the standard code, which explains it. All members of a governing board share in a joint and collective authority, which exists and can be exercised only when the group is in session. So I think those are magic words, joint and collective. That's what your authority is. Now, at the port, legislation is a prerogative of the commission. The executive director supports the commission but does not decide. Administration is the prerogative of the executive director and the commission may not interfere. So this leads to some important points. You remember in the movie Batman, how the Bat- Batman is always talking with the commissioner or interacting with the commissioner, the police commissioner? Well, in the olden days, we had that pattern of city commissioners. It was called the Galveston Plan, where the commissioners themselves were administering aspects of the city's functioning. And then it moved to strong mayor and council from the nineteen twenties on. And now, from the forties, most cities have, many cities have moved to the council manager system, where you have a council and an elected manager. And similarly, you are not commissioners who have duties with individual areas. You have the overall duty. Commissioners may not do the work of the port. Now, elected officials care deeply and sometimes they have special knowledge and expertise. They may make suggestions to the executive director, but they may not do the work of the port themselves. They must not cross the line between legislation and administration. And this is a legal requirement. So when people get elected to public office, often they're surprised at how little power they have. An individual member may not have a staff member fired. Direct staff oversee employee work product or interfere in administration. A commission may not, a commissioner may not appear before another government body and speak about port business unless the commission has authorized them to do so. A commissioner may not contact parties involved in a legal matter. Know the limits of your role. You are a policymaker, not a mover and a shaker. What is your individual power? You may debate and vote on the overall strategy to be followed. You may suggest amendments to legislation, but you may not get involved in the details of planning programs or administering the legislation. Commission must keep the executive director apprised of staff contacts. It's appropriate to copy the executive director on your emails to staff. Your duty is to debate and determine overall strategy, policy and legislation for the port and leave the details of operations to the executive director and staff. And you have three different fiduciary duties, which I know many of you are very familiar with. The duty of care, the duty of loyalty and the duty of obedience. So a commissioner has the duty of exercising the diligence a reasonable person would use in carrying out his or her duties. A commissioner has the duty of furthering the interests of the port as established by majority rule and may not take action to undermine or harm its moral stance or business interests. A commissioner has the duty of obeying the agreed upon rules and guidelines established by the port. A commissioner may propose changes but is bound by the rules until they are changed. So up until the vote, discussion is vigorous and varied. But once the vote is taken, it's a whole different ballgame. When serving on a public body, members have a duty to uphold the decision of that body even if they disagree with it. Members may express their disagreement in public, but may not attempt to undermine the decision. And they're free to try to persuade their colleagues during the meeting to change the decision within certain limits. So here's another paper we'll send you. Lost the vote? Don't sabotage the council's action. And it has some examples of sabotaging. Commissioners may not overstep their authority in outside communications. When making public statements referring to the port or speaking to other bodies, commissioners must be in touch with and inform the executive director and their fellow commissioners. Don't write a letter to the paper without letting people know. To do otherwise violates your fiduciary duties. The alternative is chaos, confusion, dissipation of the port's authority and waste of public resources. You have very limited time together and you must spend it on your true tasks. Joe?
Well, thanks, Anne. Um, so we have, uh,
Oh, thanks, Anne. So we have situations in the past where commissioners might write a letter to the editor about port business. Is that what you mean by, is that, is that a bad practice, or, you know? So I think I, I may have written one letter to the editor in six years, but I can't recall. I tried to avoid that at all costs, but, um, but we have another commissioner that's probably done several, so, um, in the past. And so what's your position on letters to the editor?
So my position is this. You, as a commissioner, may state your views, but I recommend against letters to the editor. You, what, here's an example of something you can't do. In the city of Anchorage, a school board member wrote a public opinion post telling the public to vote against the bond issue. Now, see, that was completely out of court. That was a violation of his duty, because once the decision has been taken, you can't try to undermine it. So you, you have a First Amendment right outside the meeting to say what you like and to speak to whom you like, but for the sake of prudence, I think letters to the editor are not a great idea, unless they're telling them, you know, in support of the commission's activities. So the key difference to me is stating your views versus trying to undermine. Does that help?
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
So when a person is elected to public office, they give up some of their First Amendment rights for a higher purpose, and this principle has been confirmed in our courts. Because after everyone's voice is heard, including the minority, it is the majority that makes the decision. That's the very important, I would say sacred, principle on which our society is based. So any other questions on that part? All right, let's look at public. Oh, Amy, you have a question?
Well, I was just wondering, what is the follow-up from the other commissioners when there's a violation of your duty? If one of the commissioners violates their duty?
So the commission may sanction one of its members. And we're going to have actually a workshop next week called Difficult Board Chair or Member that's going to go into how you do that. We also have a article on our website called sanctions, so you can find out about that. It's certainly within the commission's power to do that. Now, some sanctions don't have much teeth, but at least you can try. Okay, public comment. So I want to distinguish here between a public hearing and public comment. A public hearing is an administrative procedure that's governed by law and regulation. It's a meeting of the public, and it must be carefully managed. Public comment is something different. Public comment is different. The key point for you all is this: A commission meeting is not a meeting of the public. It is a meeting of the commission that is held in public. It's a meeting of the commission that is held in public, and the purpose of the public comment period is to allow the commissioners to become informed about the views of the public. And this is a phrase that I got from another city that I like. We inform the public that it is a one-way communication to the commission members. It is a one-way communication to the commission members. The public is not participating in your meeting. It is informing you of its views during your meeting. It's not participating. It's informing you of its views. And Jurassic Parliament strongly recommends that commissioners should not respond to public comment during your meetings. No matter how many times you say you're speaking as an individual, residents think you're speaking as an official, and this means that there are three voices out there, not one. And it's confusing for everyone, and your port advisory committee made the same recommendation in twenty eighteen. I know you've been dealing with this for a long time. Your job is to serve your port and your community with your best judgment, even if public pressure urges you to do something different. I think it can be hard to remember this sometimes, you know, when the voices are out there clamoring. And we've written this article, "When Public Pressure is Intense," that may be helpful to you in thinking about your role. And I found this wonderful quote from George MacDonald. "Make me into a rock which swallows up the waves of wrong in its great caverns and never throws them back to swell the commotion of the angry sea whence they came." So you can aim for that, you know? You've got to take it. You've got to absorb it. You've got to let people beat up on you, but don't throw it back. Don't swell the commotion. So your job, oh, I already said this, sorry. So you can set up a system that allows your public to speak to you, but avoid giving them the impression that they are participating in making the decision. If they, if you don't do it right, they will feel like they're it. But you are the ones, you three, as elected officials, have that heavy responsibility. So I looked into how the public can provide comment. I searched out these different sources here, and I have copies. Sam, if you would like, I can send your staff the, uh, the policies from these different bodies, so you can see how they do it. How can the public provide comment? So some people want you, some bodies want you to send an email. Some cities read the emails aloud. We do not recommend this. We want to make sure the commissioners read the email, but we don't think it's a good use of time to read them aloud during the meeting. Some require you to register in advance to provide oral comment during the meeting, and some allow you to give oral comments spontaneously during the meeting. So all the examples I have seen allow for oral comment, but do not allow the public to turn on their camera. I understand that you've been discussing that possibility, and I would recommend against it because of the time that it would take from a technical point of view to do that. So does anybody want to talk about that, or about these questions of how you receive public comment? Joe?
The, uh, sometimes you think of City of Olympia as unique and Port of Olympia as unique. Who knows if it is or not in the context of us being the capital city, but, you know, there is this big desire to respond to public comment. The public won't like it, but we could decide, this commission could decide to not respond to public comment, which would do, I guess, two things. One is it would speed up the meeting, and two, it would focus emphasis on the port commission acting or speaking with one voice. You can't speak with one voice if, if I say so-and-so, you know, I like your comment, I agree with you, and then the next commissioner says so-and-so, I'm indifferent to your comment, and I'm not going to say if I agree or not agree. And so, um, so that's just something we need to face in our upcoming meetings about, uh, conduct of the port commission meeting, and whether or not we have that response to public comment. Um, it, it really doesn't, what's really important is that we hear from the public, not that we use that as an opportunity to debate any issue, because really, the issue is not on the agenda.
Good point, Joe. I'm all for that. Amy?
So just to, that, that will be something we're discussing, Chairman. I'll correct, because I agree with Joe. I'd like to get that, uh, resolved so that we can all be on the, have the same directive as to how we want to handle that.
Yeah, I think, I think we should entertain, you know, refining our format and, and, you know, making it work better for us. I mean, I, I'm, I'm with you guys. I, I am, uh, I'm, I'm not one for really when, when responding, you know, in my, in my position, if we can just make the public aware that they, that we hear what they're saying, and we, we are considering what they're saying, but, you know, we don't need to go into a lot of detail. I mean, that's just the, um, that's the way I feel about it.
Yeah, I feel like if we can create a system that provides people good opportunity for public comment, as an active listener, I almost feel the need to acknowledge what people are saying, which just doesn't help us to speak with one voice, and it also just takes up a lot of time, probably. So if we eliminated that, we can talk about that more later, but I, I hope we can figure that out.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I would like to have that conversation.
Great. Well, I think it'll be very good for you all to do that. Sam?
And, and just as a, um, to point out the process on this, that, um, you know, we, we as staff are listening to, um, your, your discussion today and making note of, of things as well as, um, you know, some of the things that we presented in early January, then in our work session on the twenty second, we'll, um, we'll, we'll then go through those topics to include, include this, gain some clarity on which direction that, that the commission would like to go, and then revise the rules resolution to bring back for your consideration. So we'll be bringing these back to you on the twenty second.
Sounds good. And I will say that if you decide to eliminate the response, you know, there may be a slight flurry for a little bit, but it will die away. People will accept it. It's very, uh, uh, most cities and most bodies are not doing that. They're not responding, so. And, and you can say, you know, this is in accord with best practice. We are listening. We do care, and we're not going to be responding. So we recommend that commissions hold one or at most two public comment sessions. I know that, I think your body hears public comment on every action item, and we do not recommend that. We rec, I like, myself, I like one at the beginning and one at the end, or just one at the beginning. And we recommend an overall time limit. It's in the state of Washington, you are not obliged by the Constitution to hold public comment periods. People have the right to attend. They do not have the right to comment. That's very different in some other states. And you can set up the time work that works for you. Now, I don't recommend what the city of Des Moines, Iowa did. They had sixty-five people and thirty-five, thirty minutes for public comment, so they gave every citizen twenty-five seconds. Now, you know, that is not smart. That is not smart. So you pick what works for you, and then do your best to stick to it. It's best to announce the rules at the beginning of each session and provide a written handout, and you've got to be consistent. You've got to be consistent. People must address remarks to the chair, not to individual commissioners or the audience. And we recommend that public comment should not be included in the minutes. The purpose of public comment is to inform the commissioners about the view of the public, and that purpose is achieved when the commissioners hear their constituents, or when written comments are provided by email to the commissioners. Including public comments in the minutes wastes half-time. It creates the possibility of liability for the commission. The comments can become a battlefield for citizens to express their views. In the city, city, city of Burien, they, they had hundreds of pages of public comments, so don't do it. Only the chair may speak to the audience as a whole. Individual commissioners may not speak to the public or recognize people in the audience, and you certainly want to discourage demonstrations when we're back in person. These can chill free speech, both for commissioners and for the public. Now, the courts have found that governmental bodies may limit the time, place and manner of public comment, as long as all such restrictions are viewpoint neutral. So that's why we recommend these time limits. If a speaker runs over, interrupt and request that they conclude their remarks, or simply inform them, "Your time is up." You have to be willing to do this. Now, important to remember, the rules pertaining to discussion by commissioners do not apply to comment by the public. They do not apply. The commission may encourage citizens to speak politely, but cannot enforce a requirement to do this. Under the First Amendment to the Constitution, citizens have the right to express their views, even if negative. Now, attendees do not have the right to disrupt the meeting. They can't disrupt the meeting, but in general, the courts have found that mere words do not constitute disruption, or even passive actions. In Santa Cruz, California, a person was making the Nazi salute in the back of the hall, and the courts found that that was acceptable, because it was not disrupting. And again, we're going to have a whole workshop on this, uh, at the end of May, I think. If a free speech issue comes to court, often the local government loses the case. So you, if you have difficulties when we're meeting in person, you want to consult with your attorney and staff and have an action plan. Also, very important, you want to conclude with thanks. At the end of the public comment period, the chair must thank the public for attending, and explain that while this is not a time for dialogue, all comments and questions are taken seriously by the body. Sincerity and warmth on the part of the chair will make a big difference to the experience that the public has at your meeting. I, other few other things to mention, we recommend eliminating commissioner chat. This gives the impression that an individual commissioner is speaking on behalf of the port. Now, you can schedule your own meetings if you want to meet with constituents. It's perfectly fine. And in Ferndale, the mayor has coffee every Tuesday from nine to ten a.m. at a coffee shop, and people are welcome to come by. You can set up your own Zoom meeting, but when it's something that's posted and presented by the port, it gives the impression that the commissioner is speaking for the port as a whole. So we recommend not doing this. I will send you our guidelines for public comment in local government, and also a sample public comment announcement. And again, you're perfectly free to adapt this in any way that you like for your own purposes. So any questions or thoughts on these topics? And one other tip, by the way, Amy, you talked about being a positive, active listener. Body language is really important. How you look when you are on Zoom or in person will make a big difference to how the public responds. You know, I'm told that in King County, when they had in-person public comment, the members of the, of the county commission would, county council would go out and get coffee during the public comment period. So that, that does not give the right impression, you know? And if you're kind of sitting there bored or looking at your phone, that's not going to be good either. So, you know, putting your energy out there to really use good body language is another useful tip. Okay, so now we come to the climax, the summa of it all, the right kind of control, the right kind of control. So in order to put all this into practice, you need three things. You have to have knowledge of how this system works. You have to have a majority on your commission who are in favor of civility in this system. The city of Puyallup fifteen years ago revoked its rules of civility. So if you do that, this is not going to work. They've put them back since. And then you've got to have the personal moxie, the kudspah, the energy and the drive to put it all into practice. You know, it's not easy. It's easier to kind of drift along, but you've got to be on the spot. So the chair must control who speaks when. The chair serves as a benevolent dictator enforcing the rules that the group has chosen, and individual members must seek recognition before speaking. If someone speaks out without being recognized, you stop them. If someone speaks out of turn, you interrupt them. If someone makes insulting remarks, you cut them off. The chair must have the ability to do this. And members have a duty to obey the chair's directions. If they disagree, they can't argue back. What can they do?
Well, some of the things we've talked about, point of order.
Point of order, yeah.
Question.
Absolutely. Point of order or appeal, absolutely. Now, you know, duty isn't a word that we use much nowadays, but I prefer to think of it as a commitment to the principles of democracy. As a nation, we have chosen to be governed by the rule of law, not by brute force, and you're upholding that choice when you follow these principles on your commission. I think that i- in my mind, our local governments, you on the port, you commissioners and you staff, you're a marvel. You're really a marvel and a miracle, because you are doing these tasks not because you know somebody, or you paid a bribe, or because you've got your own army, but because you care, because of your commitment to our society and to your citizens. And I honor you for it, because there are many parts of the world where this does not happen. And in following these principles that I've been laying out, you are upholding the principles of our founders. And even though, you know, in many ways, our society has failed to live up to these, we're still trying. We're in there trying, and I think it's wonderful that you are willing to make that commitment. It's why I love what I do so much, because I really, it's an honor to support you all. So how should you control? Well, in some respects, you're like Napoleon crossing the Alps, you know? You've got to be absolutely in charge of your troops and, and leading the way for them. And so you want to be, you want to state the obvious. You, as chair, know more about the process than anybody else, so you must repeat yourself and state the obvious to help bring everyone along. And I will send you this language tips for meeting management, which gives this language. You know, the language sounds strange. You may feel kind of pompous if you're using it, but it's very powerful. And you can print this out and tape it to your bathroom mirror, and in the morning, when you're going about your routines, you know, you can practice saying these things, because they will really make a big difference to running effective meetings. saying these things because they will really make a big difference to running effective meetings. And, and one of the things that we talked about is how it's got to be one thing at a time. You've got to keep people on track. And remember, you can always turn to the group. So let's look at another example. The chair believes that remarks about UFOs landing at our airfield are not germane and will ask the commission to decide whether the commissioner may continue speaking on this topic. All those who believe the commissioner may continue speaking, please say aye. Commissioners in favor, say aye. All those who believe the commissioner may not continue, please say no. Commissioners opposed, say no. And then the chair says the ayes have it and the commissioner may continue speaking or the noes have it and the commissioner will cease from speaking. So this is just a wonderful and simple way to keep control of your meeting. Robert also says that the chair should never get excited. So I have a wonderful image for you of what we want to avoid at the Port of Olympia. This is, this is not posed. This is a real life photograph from one of our Washington cities. They're doing much better now, but it's always a good, I always like to throw it in just to remind us of what we want to avoid.
Okay, and what city is that? We have to know.
It's Black Diamond. It's Black Diamond. Isn't that something? The grapple for the gavel. And you can see the whole meeting where it occurred online. So why do we need these rules? Richard Rohr says, win-lose is the only game most of us understand. We have a constant unspoken need for domination and actually find no enjoyment in win-win situations. Now, I'm sure that's not true of you. I'm sure that all of you who are on this call are at a higher spiritual level, a higher spiritual plane. But as for me, speaking personally, when I get into a fight, I want to win it. And so if you feel yourself hardening into a combat position, just remind yourself that it's not a fight. It's not a fight, and take a deep breath and step back so that you can work collaboratively. So in conclusion, I invite you to subscribe to our monthly e-newsletter. We try to keep it short and interesting. We also have a blog, which is about three or four times a month. It's separate, but goes into more detail. And we have also an advice column, Dear Dinosaur. I have a lot of fun writing the answers to that. You also can email me at any time. I love parliamentary questions. Always glad to hear from you. I might not reply the same day, but I will reply. We have our book, Mastering Council Meetings. This is the only book of its kind. The only one, at least that I know of, that's written specifically for you as elected officials. And people have told us that they find it very, very valuable. So that's a possibility for you. I will also send you this product. This is called Citizen's Guide to Effective Conduct of Public Meetings, and it's not a Jurassic Parliament product. It was prepared by a group of parliamentarians as a pro bono effort in order to give in a very compact form, it's just 10 pages, the key information for government bodies in Washington State. So I said that after taking this training, you'd be able to describe the authority of the chair, the commissioners, the staff, and the public, follow best practices for discussion, respond to disorder and difficult people, make motions and amendments, and run effective public comment sessions. So let's just romp through these. We have these four fundamental guidelines. The chair is the servant of the group and the group is the final authority. All members have equal rights, privileges, and obligations. To ensure this, no one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. Courtesy and respect are required, and one thing at a time. In a way, you know, if you follow those four, you've got the essence of Robert right there. You don't need the more detailed stuff, and I'll send you a paper about it. This is how you make a motion. At the right time, you seek recognition from the chair. You state your motion. Chair, I move that we issue each commissioner a $500 bonus in recognition of their service during this pandemic. And after the motion is seconded by another member and stated by the chair, you explain why you think it's a good idea. To second it, you just call out second. You don't need to be recognized. There are these eight steps to process a motion that we talked about, and I'll send you a, a chart of them. To amend a motion during discussion on the motion, seek recognition, and once recognized, state your proposed amendment. Chair, I move to amend the motion by striking out the number $500 and inserting the number $5,000. And once another member seconds the amendment, you explain why it's a good idea before your attorney tells you that you can't do it. And there are four different ways to amend, as we discussed, and we go into all this in detail in our book. And remember, the amendment is voted on first. Once the amendment is resolved, discussion may continue on the main motion. Further amendments may be made, and finally, the vote will be taken on the main motion as amended. So I'm going to also send you sample scripts for five motions. So these show you how these all play out in terms of the jargon. These were the five types of inappropriate remarks that we covered that may not be made during meetings. And these are our best practices for public comment. Set time limits for public comment and for individual speeches. Have the public address the chair and have the chair respond. Don't engage in dialogue with the public, but have arrangements to answer their questions afterwards. Speakers may not donate their time. And on the dais, make the effort to be and to appear to be listening intently to all speakers. I'll send you this paper, Essential Guidelines for Special District Boards. And I want to close the formal portion. We'll have a little time for Q and A afterwards by this quote from Samuel Johnson. Samuel Johnson says, kindness is within our power, liking is not. Kindness is within our power, liking is not. You cannot make yourself like your fellow commissioners, but you can be kind to them, and you must be kind to them because serving on a local government board is like being in a marriage arranged by the citizens. So you're stuck with each other and your good relations are essential. So I said we were here to equip you to run Great Port Commission meetings and serve your community. So how do you feel? Do you feel better equipped?
I do. I think it was very informative and using some practical practice there, I think is really, really been outstanding. I, I gained a lot today. Thank you.
Well, I'm so glad to hear that. Thank you.
Yeah, I've read some research that arranged marriages actually yield greater success and happiness. So we have a lot to look forward to.
That's a wonderful point, Amy. That's great. Joe, such a with you again?
I'd like to say that, you having been through this before and having been through a number of Port Commission meetings, I totally understand the purpose behind it. And on the surface, it makes things regimented and formal, but what the benefit is that it institutes a great deal of fairness in the discussion, which yields big fruit as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. So I can show you how to amend an amendment, if you'd like. We've got time. Would you like to just see that little bit? It's not, it's not very long. Here we go. So when an amendment has been proposed, it's called a primary amendment. And it's also possible to amend the amendment, which is called a secondary amendment. And this is processed just like the main motion, those same eight steps, except that no further amendments are possible. You can't get any tertiary amendments. So here's our primary amendment, dimetridone. And here's our secondary amendment, small dimetridone. So the chef says in the example we were using, I move that we amend the amendment by striking the word exclusively and inserting the word primarily. So if it's adopted, it will read to be provided primarily from local vendors. So the secondary amendment blocks the primary amendment, and it's the same process that we saw before. So we, you discuss and vote on the secondary amendment, you discuss and vote on the primary amendment, and then you discuss and vote on the main motion. So we've got all three of our motions lined up here. So we discuss and vote on the secondary here. If it passes, it becomes a part of the primary amendment. Then we discuss and vote on the primary amendment. And if it passes, it becomes a part of the main motion. And then we discuss and vote on the main motion as amended. And at any stage, if we defeat one of those motions, we just toss it. So we could end up back at the main motion or we could have those amendments. So the, the, I think, I hope that's helpful. So I'm surprised to note, but happy that we finished up a little bit early. I'm sure you won't complain about that. Sam, is there anything else we should cover or anything to discuss?
Um, yeah, just note that we do have some, some copies of, of the Mastering Council Meeting books. We'll work with Anne to make sure that you each receive a, a copy. We'll also work with her on the materials that she has mentioned throughout to make sure that those are distributed to you. And some of the, the materials, you know, I, and Anne will talk with you about, about what, what, what we need and what we need to additionally purchase from you, but some of them are in laminated form that they're really handy to keep, you know, right next to you during the, the meetings. So Anne's put a lot of thought into how to actually make these tools really useful and, and kind of be that, that quick reference. So we'll, we'll make sure that you get those as expeditiously as possible.
Thanks so much, Sam.
One of the things I'm excited about is being able to refer back to Anne's expertise and this training as we're making these decisions on rules and going back to her guidance of having the chutzpah to do what is best practice and what is best for the community as a whole and being able to rely back on this rather than, it's just my opinion that this would be better. Just helps so much, because then it's not us who are making that decision. It's just deferring to expertise, which, thank you for that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And if that doesn't lead into my opinion on some of the changes to the rules, I'm excited to get some of that done because I think it'll help us be more efficient and effective.
Great, great. All right. Well, that's the end of my portion, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chair.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you again, Anne. It was very informative. I enjoyed it very much and I, I do appreciate being done a few minutes early. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
I was going to say so moved, but I'm not going to.
So actually, actually, Mr. Chair, there's something simpler. You can say there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
All right. I knew there was an easier way to do it, but thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. So yeah, there being no further, further business, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for your participation.
Thank you. Thanks, Anne. Thanks.